Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. You're minded it's being taped. And would you please rise for the pledge and stay standing for a few minutes for a moment of silence.
... America and deliver a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to put in the silence for all of our EMS and first responders and for all of our deployed troops. And on a selfish note, our grand son is deploying tomorrow at nine o'clock, so. Thank you. I'm gonna start the public comment, but before we do, I want to, I know Ryan has sent a thank you letter to our rec department, and I want to thank rec for great pride. It was fun participating and more fun circling back and watching, so, great job that rec did. Extend that to him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Somebody was fooling around.
It's a shame we couldn't have had nicer weather, but at least it wasn't raining.
Oh, it was hot.
It was warm.
It was warm.
It was warm. Okay, public comment then? Myra?
I guess that's me. Um, let's see what I have here. The first thing I have is, at the last minute, a pop-up, we kind of thought about this, um, and trying to get it together at the last minute, but so far it's coming along. Christmas in July, the 22nd, which is only a week and some days away, but the response has been overwhelming already with businesses and that kind of thing participating to give away stuff or whatever. Just a fun day in the green, um, on, as I've looked at the weather forecast, an 85, 87 degree weather. So, nice hot day, we want to just do something for communities in the summer. That's the first thing I have.
Have you selected with heritage by the greens?
Uh, no. To see if, well, I know the...
It should be open, but I usually check with them, with Jim Holly.
Yeah. Okay. Um, we haven't nailed down a time yet, just because it's gonna be so hot midday. So, kind of playing around with the time as far as, you know, I don't want people to be out like the rain in the blistering hot summer, but kind of gonna see how that goes. Okay, so we have our designer, he's working on a mini flyer for us as we speak, to just kind of get the word out. And the other thing was national night out. National night out, I got a call from Tanya Dozier, who's the contact person, though it's being sponsored by the school board candidates at Glen Rock Park, from five to eight on August the first. So, we'll put that word out there for anybody that's interested. They've lined up four or five trucks already, you know, this kind of stuff, so it should be a good night out for everybody.
For, for the event that you're planning here for the Christmas in July, are you thinking about the possibility of closing down the alley there? What's it called, railroad alley, I think?
Um...
Similar to what they do for Freedom Fest?
For Freedom Fest?
Yeah, where they, where they should, that, that, just that section of the road is what I was talking about, or were you looking at, you know, something bigger?
Just the alley that runs right in front of the green?
Just the alleyway, yeah, yeah. I hadn't really thought about that, but yes, that would be a good idea to keep traffic from flowing through there. Yeah, and I'll, I'll talk about that as well.
Donnie, do we have some road blockers to put in each alley?
Yeah.
We need motion to do that. Just an alley, I don't think it's...
Myra, what was the question?
Okay, Donnie, Donnie can put some...
Also be on the safe side.
What was it?
We will leave the cross pieces to block the road.
Right.
Donnie will leave them out, and then you just turn them to close the road on both ends.
Okay.
Generally, we need... I would entertain a motion for July 22nd, probably four hours, four hour close of the alley in front of Freedom Green.
So, move. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? My vote is aye.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry.
I've heard a lot of comments about the hill out here on Constitution coming in into town, people saying it looks like a jungle. Sixty-five years ago, the residents of North Constitution burnt that hill off. All the older, Joe Loder, Ernie Russell, what have you, so I just passed that on. People say it looks like you're coming into a jungle.
Are you talking about here where Summit, Summit New Freedom is up there, the townhouses, that whole bank?
Yep.
I think that was, um, doing that.
Well, that was supposed to have been in the association at one time, somebody said. John Loder, John Loder used to mow it.
Do you want me to check with the HLA?
They were sent a violation this month.
You're sorry?
They were sent a violation this month.
But it's, it's been enough going, and it does, it looks really, really rough.
Anything else? Okay, approval of minutes for the meeting held June 12th. Do you maintain a motion?
I think I wish we approved the meeting in ten minutes.
I just have two additions. The Lions requested permission, just put Patty Warbacher's name in there, she's the one that requested it. Page two, page four, actually page five. Personnel says nothing to report, it was reported that brought higher a new public works person.
What was, you said number two was adding Patty to what's...
Yeah, she was here requesting Lions Club.
Warbacher.
Fireworks, but in her name, it just says Lions Club requested.
And if, if we could, I want to make sure, under Mayor's presentation, if we could please put, Mayor Butcher presented citations from Representative Kate Klunk of the House of Representatives. Oh, we love that, Kate. Yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna run my motion for the three changes to, to, so the three changes is...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, we have the treasurer's report, it was a short start to the month with vacation and whatnot, so we will have two treasurer's reports for August to look at. Unfinished business, the sign regulation draft went to Wade and Andy for review, so we should have something to present to Borough Council at the next meeting for the sign regulation. So, that's in review by Borough staff right now. Stormwater channel on North Constitution, there's no updates, they're still waiting for the joint permit review. Mulberry Court, the stormwater retention pond, Public Works went out and Wade went out, and they viewed the situation, and basically, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. There's trees growing through the pipe, there's a pipe that's basically rusted out on the bottom. In the opinion of Borough staff, the owner would need to put the property on a separate parcel and upgrade or provide funds to upgrade the infrastructure prior to the borough considering, and I tend to agree with that opinion. I'd open that to discussion, but the opinion of Borough staff is that we should not take it on at this time.
I think that was, that was the solicitor's recommendation also.
Also, yes, the solicitor agrees with that.
I concur that, and also have it to be updated, it's not Mulberry Court, it's Mulberry Lane.
Um, sorry.
Do we have to make a motion for something?
Uh, well, we would have made a motion to adopt it, but I, I mean, we're not, I would say no.
So, just, we just have to wait until it's, they come back to us, right?
Well, I guess the question is, what do you want the response to be to the Realtor? Because he wants to list it on the market, he wants to know what to do. So, if the answer is, is we're not moving forward, but I think we should...
It was a market.
Oh, okay. But he's got to know how to market it, or, the buyers, the rest of the buyers know what the outcome to be.
If, 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 under consideration, we're gonna consider it down the road, I think we should say we're gonna consider it down the road. If we're gonna say, we're not considering this at all, why don't just tell them we're not gonna consider it at all now, and let...
I'll just tell them we're not going to.
So, he doesn't do the subdivision plan and maintenance, et cetera, go through the expensive avenues?
Are you gonna be considering it if they view dual, they would do a...
That's what I'm saying.
Are you guys the question?
He does all that, are we gonna say, we're still not interested?
Oh, yeah.
Save the expenses.
Yeah, I, I think we owe them, owe them some sort of answer so that they know what to do. That's, that's all I'm saying, is I don't think you have to make a motion to turn them down, but if the answer is, is the borough is not interested in now or any time in the future to do all these things, I think we should just, in fairness, tell them.
Yeah, why don't we send a letter to the Realtor stating that the borough is not interested in taking it, and if you want, you could list the factors, but the towns are gonna come back with remediation for that.
It seems like we've maintained our pipe.
Kelly won't go with that.
That would be something that would have to be included in the, what do you call it?
In like the, I'm looking it up, the lives listing now, yeah, it would have to be in all the disclosures.
Disclosures, yeah.
The buyer would have to sign off on.
Right.
And I work with Rich Colton in my office, he's the one that's listing that. So, yeah, that would need to be disclosed.
And that'd be a question I would ask if it was a buyer.
Right, yeah.
Sure, yeah. Probably a response.
Do you need anything more from us to write the letter?
No. That, I mean, that's a consensus, right? Everybody's on the board, we're not interested.
Right. I, I concur. And Wade said he has enough to write the letter, so, maybe you could shoot a copy back to council for next month, just so we have it, you kind of know what was said. Does that need a motion?
No, there's nothing on the table.
No, okay.
There's nothing on the table, so, I would say no.
And thank you to Public Works for checking that out. Okay, anything under, else under unfinished business? Okay, new business, this is a follow-up to our meeting with the accountant, this is considered approval for a capitalization policy. This is a standard, and it's utilized by other municipalities in the area, it's what Shrewsbury Borough does with their accounting. It's been reviewed and approved by the auditor. We would capitalize any asset that has a useful life of one year, or extends the useful life of one, of an asset for more than one year, or increases the value of an asset. So, new assets must be at least $10,000 to be capitalized. All assets purchased with long-term debt will be capitalized regardless of the dollar threshold, and this will avoid the situation that occurred on the financial statements in '21 and '22. It's a standard way municipalities capitalize. So, this is different than what we did before, or it's just... Yeah, the accounting is different, yes. This is, this will, this will match the government accounting, GASB Statement 34, and this will be, we've updated our accounting system, both sides talk to each other now through Andrew's efforts and Tara's efforts to put together the accounting system. This is the next step in the process to list and capitalize our assets. It'll also give us a good feeling for what we have in assets and what needs to be replaced, maybe in the future, or what we no longer need. So, yes, it's a good thing.
So, it'll prevent the misinterpretation that we've had in the past?
Exactly, right, great. So, I would entertain a motion to adopt this capitalization policy.
Make a motion to adopt the capitalization policy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, are there any other questions or discussion?
I believe there's a lot of things in here, and I believe there should be something that's taken up with Andrew here, and moving all this responsibility over to him, and there's lots of questions here.
And the responsibility over in, within the house of the manager with all the other Kelly?
Well, we're delegating him, it's, we're the Borough Council here, and this is being delegated with little oversight in a lot of areas.
Is it being added to, it wasn't a responsibility before, this is now added to what's currently done?
This would normally be his responsibility, it's not, it's not any different than the current accounting that he does. I think it gives a lot more transparency into borough assets and borough, and, you know, this is, and this is like standard...
This is kind of what I brought up before that I was admonished for, in the general accounting practices and so forth, and I just, you know, what's driving this new policy, you know, long-term planning, how is that even defined? I, I don't know, it just says that, you know, management's narrative overview, well, what does that mean? Who's doing it? You know, expanded budgetary reporting, what exactly is that? Is that monthly, is it yearly, is it on our reports, you know?
These are defined by GATB 34.
Right. This, this is a standard boilerplate capitalization policy, it's not anything fancy. The, the actual implementation allows you to, you know, the purpose of it is to give these five items, the implementation will be done by council and the borough manager. Is any of this in response to the meeting we had with the auditor, or is this separate? Yeah, no, this was a discussion with the auditor. Okay, that, well, that's what I was thinking. This kind of finalizes what we discussed that we were going to have. Right, exactly. Coming up with... And the auditor reviewed this, and so, I mean, it's not...
The other thing is, is this is Borough Council giving the manager direction on how to decapitalize assets, so you're not really, you're, you're actually telling him what the parameters are of how to handle the assets by adopting this policy, whereas he, that wasn't in place before, so it seems like you're actually putting more restrictions on him as opposed to giving more...
Not really, because like number three depreciation, it says, you know, the management shall evaluate the useful life of that asset determined, you know, who is the management? Because in the front, it doesn't talk about management, it talks about borough manager, and then why is it...
You're talking about straight line method of depreciation, isn't that just standard accounting practice? Yeah, and the, and that's what is proved by the auditor, and it's, it's not, I mean, it's not anything that's ideal.
You really have to read this in coordination with, with the general accounting standard number, number 34.
Can we be provided that then? We don't have anything to put this by, we don't have any definitions of, you know, what I referenced earlier, you know, why is it not until the beginning of '22 that we're looking at infrastructure assets will be recorded until, you know, in '23, we spent millions, why aren't those in there? Why is it only prior to 2022?
I didn't understand that.
The last sentence, it says, "Infrastructure assets will be reported, respectively, beginning in 2023." You've spent millions, so why isn't the value of assets that you've spent, you know, being put into here?
Being previous assets?
It will be.
It says beginning in 2023.
They will be valued effective at the beginning of 2023, correct?
From how far back?
Anything that we own. As I say, caused if required prior to December 22nd, capitalized assets...
And that, and that, why doesn't it go back like...
I think it's just for practical purposes, you don't go back in time when you're trying to value things, your assets, because historically, it's depreciated some and so on and so forth. And, I mean, this makes sense to me, why you would do it beginning of the current year. Typically, with accounting, you don't go back in time and try to fix what was there, you go from a date forward, but you're right, I mean, that's...
And that would give us a 10-year depreciation standard of what there's others...
It depends, it does, it also depends on what type of asset it is, or...
Well, it's basically, after depreciation, it's worth nothing after 10 years, pretty much.
I didn't even get, like, I just got this a couple days ago on Thursday, I don't even know what the outlines are, because it's just given us to pass it with, again, not knowing what the parameters are. I think that we should have that for review before passing this.
So, go onto the internet and look and see what GASB Statement 34 is, correct? And that should show it.
I think they're, I think they're all available, yeah.
Rather than all of us have to have a packet like this to...
Individually.
That's what it is.
And, and I think that's kind of high there at the bottom, the dollar threshold established with adoption of this policy is 10,000. Private sector's generally half of that, and if we're gonna be a private sector like it says on the front, you know, I think that is another item for discussion, so.
Have a motion this afternoon?
Well, just to be clear, it says similar to private sector, it does say it was coming from...
Right, no, it's definitely not the...
Similar to private sectors, nowhere near 10,000. Again, we might have the outlines of what this is all talking about, so there's nothing to reference it from for these definitions.
Well, can we, can we include the, the F34 in our, in our documents tied to this thing?
Well, I think, I think you, it is.
It is.
It is, because it's, it's a part of its reference, so on and so forth, so you would necessarily have to consult it when you're looking at this document, which I think Andy does.
He's familiar with, with...
Right, but the answer, Eric, is concerned so that other people would understand what's going on here. Can we just include that?
Well, it is included by reference.
Under your authority, I think.
So, it's already, it's already a document they can get on our website.
That's correct, yeah.
You're asking for a vote to something I've never even reviewed. And the audits, like '21 and '22, does the council need to vote on those, accept those?
If you have not done so yet, you should, yes.
So, those haven't even been addressed, and we're going on to this, I think there's housekeeping that needs to be done prior to this.
Those are mutually exclusive, they don't have to have, I mean, I understand what you're saying, they, they've been presented, they should be voted on, but this is for going forward. I'm, I'm inclined to go ahead and approve this, this is standard, standard issue stuff. I mean, if there are questions, the $10,000, I think is, I think that's what Shrewsbury Borough uses, so that's kind of what we, we went along with that, so. I'll leave it up to the group, I'll call for the vote, and vote to table it if you like. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
This vote is to table it, or to...
No, this vote is to approve it.
No.
My vote is aye, motion carried. The next is a, an approval of a resolution for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. This was a grant that Andy applied for back in February of '22. We received preliminary approval on this grant, it's a project to replace all of Bailey Avenue's stormwater piping and inlets. The grant's for $150,000, 75% from federal and 25% from state. I tried to find out what the total cost would be, basically, we would work to the, you know, basically, a design to cost to the grant, so there's not planned at this moment to spend any money beyond the $150,000 grant. So, this resolution approves going forward in accepting this grant.
And it authorized Andy to sign it.
Right.
On behalf of the borough.
So, this, that's the designation of agent resolution?
Right.
Correct. I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
What if it was over $150,000?
Well, like I said, it would be a designed to cost, so he would have, we would come back to council if it was going to be anything more than $150,000, not, they're not planning on spending more than $150,000, so...
What if they get into it and it's one of those, we didn't, we didn't think that was gonna happen, now it's gonna be 200, is it, would it be a situation where, like, they're just not gonna do it? Can they only do $150,000 worth of it, and the, the, the rest of it has to be a separate project?
Donnie, are you on the Bailey Street Stormwater Management?
Yeah, we, we have a lot of pipes up there that are starting to fail, so this would be the time to do it, get grandma to do it, since it's worth a while. If you wait five, 10 years later, they're gonna pay double the price, so if you get a grant and get it done now, I'd do it now.
Yeah, I'm not trying to say that we shouldn't spend the 150, like, if, if somebody's giving us that money, we should absolutely take it.
Yeah.
But if we get into it, and then all of a sudden, the situation's where, you know, something was unexpected, what kind of situation or what kind of requirements would we have after that? You know, could we just do the 150,000 and then do...
Quit?
Why don't we just articulate that in our motion?
Yeah, as long as, as long as you phase it so that you're at stopping...
I think it depends on where you have, like, what the situation is. If you do so many runs, and it's like, you look at the next one, it's gonna go over 150, you can stop. And it's, but if you're going, if you're in the middle of a run, you can't just...
I just want to make sure that we're not gonna be tied to having to accept another 50,000, 40,000, whatever, just because of doing this.
Yeah, I understand.
It's gonna be designed, and you have, you have the information.
Yeah, this, this is a preliminary resolution, it just allows him to sign for the grant.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure that we're not...
But there's been nothing bid yet, so we have no...
So, we would have to approve that bid once it comes through, and if it comes in, I would...
I don't think it's going to tie us into having to pay more later if they come back and say that this project's gonna be 200,000, so that we can just put up the expectation that we have 150,000 for this project, and that's what they will do the work to.
Well, yeah, if it's come back over 150, you say no. We could always say no.
All right, I just, I got you.
But you can divide the project down, I mean, just divide it out, do your worst spot, see what you have. If you can't do the other spots, then you wait till you either have funds to do it or you wait for a hundred grand.
Right.
But do your problem areas first and do what you can with all 50,000.
And this is for stormwater, that's correct.
Does that mean that the road would have to completely be dug up, replaced?
No.
Or can they run it in, or... Most of that could be done with Mr. Rehab, which is, he goes in and coats the pipes.
There you go.
And then we're not taking anything up, and we got a lot of, there's a lot to go through people's properties up there.
I know...
I know Shrewsbury did that, and it saved them a bunch of money by just doing that.
Yeah, and it's a little bit more expensive to do than Mr. Rehab, but saves a lot on, you know, taking on people's properties and all that, you know, the process. Maybe work on that first, do that first, and see what money you spend on.
Yeah.
Compared to the 150,000.
As big as a unified contract with a lot of your stuff that's in it, you can just, you can look at it and say, okay, we can afford this, or we can afford that, and we can't afford Y, or we can do X and Z or something, you know.
And I think this lets us move forward. Once we have, we know we're going to get the money, then we can bid it out, see what, you know, what can possibly be done. If it's going to go over that, we don't have to do it.
That line that was done on our street, Donnie, was it just last year?
Yeah.
We worked out pretty well.
Yeah, I mean, sooner you get something that got done, the better it works. You do have to play keep the terrain, and Mr. Rehab can't commit, and you have to look at it. I guess it's a little bit more expensive, too, depending on whether you're digging and all that.
Yeah, you know, pretty well.
Whatever, it's got to be a lot cheaper than taking the whole thing up and then we're having to repay.
Oh, yeah.
This is just like the last month where the information is just missing. You know, where are the fine details of this grant, just like the last month? There wasn't the details, there wasn't any of that. You spit out some dollar amounts, that's not even in here, so you're getting briefed on this, and you come in comfortable with it, knowing everything. I don't have anything on...
I didn't get briefed on it. I got a note from Andy.
I didn't get a note from Andy.
Well, I got it right prior to this meeting. But all of this, again, all of this does is allows Andy to sign saying that we're going to accept the grant. We can then turn down the grant if we choose to, but this allows us to move forward.
I clarified that last month with a grant. That's not how it works.
I'm sorry, which grant?
You're giving him authority, just like last month. You know, we were blindly going into all of this, and...
No, that was, that was a little different. That was saying whether to enter the grant or not. Again, you can turn that grant down as well.
But grants cost money to apply for, correct?
They do. They absolutely do.
Money isn't free. Money isn't free, just like, you know, this last stormwater that we did. Now, people can't wash their cars because that was, you know, part of it. You know, you have to clean your streets, and now you have to have a... So things are always attached, there's always strings to it. Other than this paragraph right here talking about hazardous mitigation grant, I don't have any information. I don't know what it is.
The exact, the exact thing that we're approving...
What's in the box?
The exact thing that we're approving is for Andy to move forward and say, yes, we want the money. It's still in preliminary stages. We haven't gone out and gotten any bids, we haven't made any commitments. This is just allowing him to sign saying, yes, we want the money.
How do we know if we want the money if we don't know the terms of the grant? It's up to Andrew just to decide? The council is just relinquishing all of its responsibility to Andrew to decide if we want to go forward with this grant with whatever the strings are that we have to jump through and possible long-term binding of this council in a contract? I just, you know, up until 1968, this act, how have we been doing it, this process before? Why this now?
I have not a clue what your, what question is now.
Why do you want this now? This act, this repetitive, let's see, the National Flood Insurance Act of 68, you know, up until 1968, how is this process done before to apply for these mitigation hazardous programs? Why this now?
This was a grant available that he applied for back in February of 22. It took this long for it to work its way through the system. This allows him to sign saying, yes, we want the money. They still haven't said they're going to give us the money. Once they say they're going to give us the money, then that will enable us to go out and ask contractors or at least bid the material to figure out. And then we could come back to Borough Council and say, okay, we got this grant, it's going to cost 20K more. Do we want to do it? Or it's going to cost 20K less, and we could do the whole thing. Isn't that great? But right now, it's 150K of, you know...
Where are the fine details of that grant? What are the, what are the parameters of it? What are the strings to it? How can I vote on this, not knowing what the grant involves?
Is this a matching grant? I mean, do we have to put, so we don't, we have nothing, we don't have anything in it. They're just giving us free money.
Well, there are strings.
Right now, there are no matching...
This is a federal program.
Yeah, I'm, we went through the grant with the playground, and it was, you know, they pay half, we pay half.
Right, that was a D C N R grant. I mean, I think the other way to look at this is, is you don't have the opportunity to get the money if you don't go forward.
Right.
So you can't turn it, I mean, if you want to turn it down now because you don't know enough about it, and I don't know what the timing is on this. Maybe you have another month to sign this, and maybe if you want additional information, you can ask that. I don't, I don't know if anyone knows the answer, whether you have, if you don't sign this tonight, whether you don't, whether the grant goes away.
But the bottom line is, if it comes in and there are numerous times that...
You can turn, we just turn it down. This just allows him...
We say thanks, no thanks.
Right, we say thanks, no thanks.
It's giving Andrew at the top, right there, it's resolved. The Borough Council, Andrew Schaper, is hereby authorized to execute for on behalf of the borough. So it doesn't say that it comes back, it doesn't say that we have anything in any, any decision.
This, this is basically the same type language that any grant that we go after, Andy goes and he has to sign for the grant. This is just, I mean, if you go back through the resolutions, there are numerous resolutions authorizing borough managers to sign for a grant.
There's not anything sneaky.
This is just 150K that we're going to get.
Did we do this similar with the Rec?
Oh, yeah.
Department grant to get the new Rec Director, right? And he's the one that we approved to sign paperwork, correct?
This is work that has to be done, whether we get the grant or not, correct?
It is work that has to be done, yeah. It's not forever less work.
Or it's going to cave in.
So we have the opportunity to possibly get 150,000 to help pay for that.
Right.
If we don't get the grant, we're all going to...
And we don't have to take it out of taxpayer dollars. It's 150K coming from the state and federal government.
I would say that I'd see Erica's point, nothing is free. So when the federal government is just giving out money, sometimes there's even strings attached. I think what Erica's saying is, is can we actually read the paperwork that the grant form to sign, that Andrew's going to be signing over? Because I think that once Andrew signs over and says, yes, we want this money, then you're locked into the...
You're not locked in.
No, you're not.
You're not locked in. If you, if there's...
You can always turn money from a grant back to the government, and he just gives it to you.
Well, good, well, she, well, I think she would feel comfortable if she could actually read the form herself.
Are we...
Is that...
I mean, you have to realize, this is something that we do all the time.
Right.
This is like the, I don't know, probably the fifth or sixth or eighth one that we had in front of this council.
Right.
It's not unusual.
To the point, though, is that that's rather the stormwater management thing. You know, you start accepting things, and then they require you to get the street sweeper, they require you to get all these burden...
Stormwater management was not a grant.
The gist of what she's saying is, is that, you know, it's always, there's always strings attached with government. I mean, I think that's what she's just trying to make sure that there's no strings attached, because a lot of times, things appear to be one way, and then sometimes you're like, oh, man, now they got, because now we've got to do this, this, and this.
And I think, I think what the solicitor and I are both trying to say is that if we sign this, allowing Andrew to go forward, because this is very preliminary at this point, it allows him to go forward to the next step, and they would lock in the money. It would then allow us to go bid, and if we wanted to, we could turn the money back.
Is there an application fee involved?
As Peter said, this is work that needs to...
The borough authorized you to apply for this, Andy, to apply for this in 2021.
Right.
So this is just the next step in that process.
So then...
Authorizing him to sign documents on behalf of the borough to get that grant. If you tell him to stop, he'll stop. He has to stop.
So I understand how contracting and stuff works, that's great, but then she'll have a chance to be able to read fine print.
Sure, absolutely.
Before it's actually committed in.
Absolutely, 100%.
By print, okay.
100%.
Anybody who wanted to request that information that got this packet electronically or picked up their packet could have asked Andrew any of these questions. We're asking for that information already.
I shouldn't have to ask for this information. It should be put in our packet, and there should be more people up here asking questions like this, I believe. How much does this cost for us to apply for this grant?
I don't think that's a fair question, and...
How much it costs us? How much is it?
You already, we already applied.
So what was the cost?
I don't know that, but you applied for it in 2021. That's the point.
I wasn't there in 21.
So it doesn't matter, though, it's already been done.
It's already been done.
If there was a cost.
And I, I think that's a fair point, what she's making. So maybe as a, wait a few more minutes as a follow-up to Andrew to say that next time we're applying for a grant to just include that in a packet of this grant cost, X number of dollars to apply for.
I'm not sure that there was a cost to apply. I think it was Andrew's time, but I...
I think it's a valid, like, is it, is it 50 bucks? Is it 500 bucks? Is it 2,000?
I've heard it's thousands at times. Aren't all grants, don't you have to, isn't there an application fee?
It depends on the borough. But that is an...
No, we're saying that's already been paid if, in 2021, when we applied for it, now they're saying, okay, you're authorized.
Right.
Am I right?
You're right.
I'm trying to figure this out, too.
I think it's a fair point to know what, what these costs just were.
Yeah, and in the future, that, we definitely can do that. I don't know if anyone asked the question back then or not.
Is there a deadline, though?
That's, I'm going to ask Andy, I'm going to ask him.
Oh, yeah, okay, because I was...
All right, so we have...
Let's find out if this is the deadline for that, otherwise we could lose the grant completely.
Right, if you don't have a chance.
And like he said, we may have to pay the whole thing ourselves.
But there is, there is, there is no downside to approving this document.
I understand.
There could be a downside to approving, accepting the grant, but this just allows it to move forward. It's very preliminary at this point.
Just like we did with the EMS and trying to get the D C E deal on the...
Yeah, exactly.
You know, we didn't pay anything until they said, okay, we'll help you fund a regional EMS. Then they start collecting money.
You may have to apply for a grant to find out what the terms are going to be, okay? So you apply for the grant, they'll say, okay, we'll give you 150, 35% federal, 25% state. Why didn't you do X, Y, Z, accept?
And that's the next step.
Someone don't give you the rules up front unless you apply. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Sometimes, sometimes it's right.
Generally, you can, generally, you can get those, I mean, you can get them online.
Was it I...
I mean, they can always add a condition when you move, look how long it's taken to get this far. They can always add a condition by the time you, you know, that if you're going to be approved for a grant, they're going to send you the money, they can tap something out.
Well, and many times, we apply for a grant, and the paperwork hasn't been written yet. I mean, so this is just the next step. And, you know, if they, like, for, as an example, if we don't sign this, they may decide, well, we're not going to write the paperwork, because no one's going to accept the grant. So why bother? So...
And I, my new deal with the EMS and fire company with their grants, it has to be in and complete by a certain date, or that's it, the money goes to something else.
Yeah, but if you apply, that's usually an application deadline, and they have funding cycles and so on. So I think working on that, this was, we hit that funding cycle, put the application in, and it took them two years to decide we'd get the money.
Surprised.
Yeah.
Maybe somebody else waited too long, and then missed somebody else in the process.
I mean, I understand Erica's point, and I certainly wouldn't want to obligate the borough, you know, like, if there was a gotcha in there that says, well, you have to put 300K in, and we'll give you 150, then we would turn the grant down. So...
I texted Andy just to ask him if there's a deadline.
I, there is no downside to approving this. This is for him to sign.
We have, we have the motion, we have to sign, correct?
Correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hoes?
No.
I vote as aye. Motion carries.
I can vote as a aye.
I'm sorry?
We have two minutes.
Oh, yeah, two minutes, I'm sorry. Motion still carries. Okay, solicitors report.
I don't really have anything to add. You aren't working on that, so I know where it is. It's been fairly quiet.
Which is a good thing. Okay, one other thing on the manager's report. We have the stuck on the rail coming up. There are still a lot of volunteer positions open, so anyone who wants to volunteer, you know, on the website, there is a place we can sign up. I'm sure Andrew would appreciate it.
There's a cool question on that. I mean, I signed up for one of them, but what, I don't understand what needs to be done in those volunteer things. They're just, they're...
There's all kinds of things, you know, selling tickets, there's raffle tickets, there's, you know, they, somebody has to put the meat in the cups, and somebody distributes it, distributes it, people vote, there's people to tally the votes, things like that. There's going to be people there who are going to be selling the slushies and draft beer, and the live music is taking care of, the food vendors will take care of their own food and whatnot. But there's a whole list of things on the website.
I saw it, and I volunteered to take the meat when it was coming in, but do I have to carry around a 150-pound thing of meat someplace, or it's not obvious to me?
It's like following the child, you know? Yeah.
Okay.
No, you'll just be, you'll just be going to the different stations and taking the meat, putting it in a little cup, and handing it out.
If you, if you have any questions, just, just call Andy and ask him.
Yeah.
I told him, I'll be wherever you need me, you know?
Yeah, I have residents asking, I just tell them, call Andy, because I'm not really sure either, you know? Because first thing, first time doing this, so...
Yeah, yeah, so I'm new to everybody, really. I went last year to the one in Spring Grove. Just went to see what it was all about. It was good. But, yeah, how to run one, I have not a clue.
Yeah, I think, you know, people need to know that this is a national event. This isn't just a, you know, throwing a barbecue together in the bar.
Right.
This is a national, national event, which, if this is successful, could bring a lot of, a lot of people into town in the future.
Yeah, absolutely. Last week, or last month, rather, I talked about the bidding, the trash contract, and how bids work, and there was some discussion about Glen Rock's, Glen Rock's trash bid. So I did a little bit of homework to figure out what, what actually happened. I mean, we're really not comparing apples to apples with Glen Rock. Just to give you a couple, a few ideas, I mean, the population in Glen Rock is 2,300, and the population in New Freedom is a little over 5,000. There's 800 households in Glen Rock in 1,900 years, so it's a 42% change. And just the square mileage is about 40% greater in New Freedom. Glen Rock is a half-day job, New Freedom takes a whole day. I talked with Joel at Penn Waste. He said that the Glen Rock 2022 contract is probably the last contract that they, that they're all used without toters. The reason it was without toters is a couple, but the primary reason was they didn't have the equipment at the time the contract was bid. We still don't have the equipment even for us. So, I mean, everything's on back order, but hopefully, after we get through this first year, the second year will be, the toters will be more important. New Freedom basically gets the same amount of service. We get about eight bags, seven-plus bags, for 17% less money. Glen Rock stayed with two times a week at a 31% cost increase.
31% could have been used, or...
But anyway, New Freedom went to one times a week with an 11% increase, but we saved a...
11%.
Sorry?
It was higher than 11% increase for what? New Freedom.
Eighty to 85 a quarter?
Yeah, it's eighty, yeah, right now, it's eighty to forty.
Cut the service in half. It's cut to half.
Well, it's not, not the number of bags, it's not cut to half. You know, we still have, we still have a lot of bags.
We got twice a week.
We put out 12, 32 gallons, but can't.
I don't know why we're going over this.
Well, because you made some claims that I didn't particularly care for, and I don't think that we...
I made accurate claims. Everything I said, absolutely. And, and it gave me truthful information.
I'm sorry?
And from Glen Rock, didn't...
And from Glenrock didn't give me truthful information.
Well, I'm telling you that these numbers, and these are numbers are from Joel, so that's, that's what I'm telling you, I'm telling you.
Well, I got it straight from the borough.
Anyway, last, last but not least, uh, I talked to Joel about the possibility, I know the mayor has talked about when you have crabs and you want, and people, other people have talked about, uh, Christmas and Thanksgiving and whatnot. And Penn Waste does have a thing where you can get a thirty-two gallon bag on occasion if you want, or even every week if you want, but you have to call ahead, and it's gonna be a five to ten dollars. So Andy will work that out with Joel. But it will be an additional, a slight additional charge and it'll give at least a little extra.
Does that say, but the truth very tells you, or do you?
Yeah, I think so. It's thirty-two gallon.
I'd say, I've heard, I've heard ten, I don't know.
I think. Yeah, he didn't know what it was either.
I talked to a couple municipalities and you, you have to, the cheapest way to do it is, I think they'll sell you thirteen bags at a certain price. Now, you can probably buy individuals. I think Penn Waste is willing to kind of work with this. They have been so far and.
He says you just have to call. If you call like a day, even a day before and say, I'm gonna have an extra bag, they will take it. It could be extra costed because they have to get off the truck and throw it on the truck.
Now, is that a bag that we supply or the orange bag that you have to purchase?
Yeah, we didn't get into that much detail.
I think there's a, a special orange bag that some of the other municipalities you can purchase. Are you aware of any of those?
I, I, they are different depending on whether you have a little volume option or a bag option, or you have the once a week. It's all there in place. Everyone does it different, so I don't know, I don't know what they, what they do.
I think that always helps if they're willing to, to do something like that to help them.
I mean, my misthought is throw an extra bag out and put a six pack on and they take.
That works. They don't do three packs of whole Milwaukee anymore?
Just to clarify, so New Freedom, we have eight bags once a week, and Glenrock is twice a week, four bags each. So it's eight.
Signed with you.
Yeah.
And again, the next contract with Glenrock, you said, would be once a week. It's not, it's just what they have to do.
It's four years from now.
Well, yes, because their contract is relatively recent.
Actually, they can extend it from there. So we did ours at the same time, August, October. I don't understand, the trucks weren't available then. That can't be the reason.
Their contract started, yeah, August first, and ours started January.
October, this was voted on, and he was sitting right there. And before October, it was told that it had to go to automated, so that's just the facts.
That's a true thing. I agree with you. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention, and I guess we could talk about this in, um, but roaches keep coming up. And, um, New Freedom, I think, needs to, to make the statement that we can't really do anything about roaches. I mean, it's not something we're going to get involved in. It's not something, you know, the HUD doesn't consider it a health hazard, they're not gonna go shut the block down. Um, it really is a landlord and owner problem. And for us to be involved with even, I mean, the problem is, we can't tell where the roaches came from. We can surmise where they came from, but we don't, we don't know for sure. So I think, um, it'll probably come up again in the future, but I really think that we need to, uh, make the statement that, you know, it's not a whole lot we can do about roaches from a tax dollar standpoint.
Do we need to make this a civil matter amongst the people that live in that block?
It can be a civil matter, but after talking with, and Davey can, can weigh in here, but after talking to lawyers and other tenant landlord relationships, it is almost impossible to prove where roaches come from.
I, I can tell you that right now we're dealing with a.
Skull fly?
A net fly. Nat, nat fly issue in Spring Grove Township. We've had to deal, I've dealt with flies in Jackson Township. And the MPJ in Jackson Township says, did you track those flies that they came back from that farm? So you can imagine how that went if you had.
Fruit flies?
No, they were just regular flies from horse work. They were horse flies. So it becomes very difficult to track it down. Uh, and until you get on the property, it's even harder. You can surmise where they're coming from. You can usually tell, but it is, it becomes very difficult from a proof standpoint and a clue.
Now, there are other violations that we can enforce in that area which we are.
Absolutely. Whatever we can do to.
Maybe mitigate. Maybe that'll help mitigate part of it, like you said.
The trouble is, is it's hard to, uh, it's hard to bring enough pressure to bear to keep it clean. So, yeah. But I just wanted to make that statement because it's come up again this last month, and I wanted to make sure everybody at least heard and.
I just wanted to let you know, the reading that Donnie Miller was here mentioned, children and youth. I called them and roaches are not a biting insect.
Right.
So the only thing Denise, uh, children and youth said, the only thing they'll offer is cleanliness, counseling.
Yeah.
That they don't, that's not a removable offense.
That's the exact same thing the mayor and I found out when we tried to get some, someone involved from, uh, yeah, and they, they won't. So.
Yeah, from children's youth services and almost every other.
They just don't consider it a health hazard. I do, but they don't.
I did hear back from Andy. He said that that has to be signed tonight, approved tonight, or you lose any chance.
We did, yes.
He did, I was reporting back.
When's the date it would be due?
He didn't say, he just said, if we don't do it tonight, we'll.
Well, there's.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. All right, where's the mayor? Of course, again, you have your, um, police commission reports. I, I'm gonna get together with chief. I'm a little concerned because our, um, our incidents have, have gone up quite a bit. Maybe it's just because it's summer. Uh, I'd like to be able to pull, um, last year's figures versus this year. If, if you take a look at it, I mean, we've had some, we're, we're above what our hourly, uh, target is, um, for the month and, uh, I think for the year. Yeah, our target was thirty, we're above thirty-seven point, almost thirty-eight hours. Um, so I don't know what's going on other than the fact that, like I said, it's summer, the kids are out, stuff's happening. Uh, you have that, you don't need me to go over that with you. You can see what each of the incidences were, um, during the last meeting, mission meeting. We did find out, if you recall, some time ago, we discussed catalytic converters, uh, that an organization had been coming up through from Maryland to Chambersburg to here and cutting off catalytic converters. And, why are you laughing?
It happened to our friend.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it happened in Baltimore to our friend.
And mostly it was, it was the big trucks.
Yeah.
They liked, they liked the trucks, they're easy to get in there, cut and out. Well, anyway.
Catalytic converters bigger.
Yeah, right, well, they called them. Um, they are in Maryland, I believe, now, being prosecuted. We're gonna wait for transfer to York County where they will also, um, end up in court. Alexander's Jewelers, if you remember the smash and grab there, they did make an arrest there, uh, so, which is good. Um. The fireworks store over in Glenrock, it doesn't really have anything to do with us, but I'll let you know what, what they've been going through. Fireworks store in Glenrock was a theft. Somebody went in, just filled up the cart, ran out the store, threw it all in the car and took off. So, um, and those people were from Baltimore City. Um, I think they did catch those, am I correct, Erica?
They left one in the parking lot.
They left one in the parking lot.
Hutsers? That's a good one.
Loyalty among.
That's right, yeah, it was, it was in the parking lot, he must have snitched the rest of them. Our new vehicle.
Well, what did you, if you were.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'd be. We got our new vehicle in, um, that arrived in, uh, from order in twenty-twenty-two, that we had already scheduled, um, the monies for, um. The one police car got banged up. They didn't really say half, but.
Yes, it did. Uh, it's back, I'm looking at his computer and hit a little concrete pole, not making damage.
That's right. It was not somebody hit him, he got knocked, you know? He was on his cell phone, you know? Yes, computer. Um, the collective bargaining unit, as some of you are aware, uh, twenty-twenty-four will begin our new, um. Round of, well, you're negotiating now.
It expires December.
It expires in December, so we're gonna have to come up with a new contract before them.
Celebrating well.
It is? Okay, good, good. Um, they're looking at an alternative to what we use now for retirement, which is PMRS. And, uh, they will have, there will be a meeting coming up. Uh, that is the retirement unit that they use, you know, I guess it's like any other retirement company, uh, that's making a proposal. Uh, I guess they feel they can do a better job than PMRS. Um, okay?
Well, well, it doesn't hurt, it doesn't hurt to find out.
PMRS was recently acquired in the last year, and my understanding is the level of service has gone down six. So I, I have another finding that they're going through that, so I don't know if they're having that in store.
Well, apparently they are because they're looking, looking elsewhere, they're gonna entertain that. Um. Well, I can't read my writing. We have a new officer was sworn in at the last meeting. Um, finally, he's graduated, taking all his courses from the academy. They asked all his credentials. Uh, I guess he'll be on, is he permanent or is he still on, uh, is he a permanent officer or is he still on, you know, like, part-time, what do you call it?
He's been on, he's on full time now, but he's not in classes at the moment.
Okay. So, um, we have gotten a new secretary for the, um, mission. Uh, she started, uh, just last week. Um, I haven't written yet. The collective bargaining unit, is that July seventeenth? Is that the one?
Yes.
That is not open to the public, right?
No, the seventeenth is the company that's coming to talk about the PMRS.
PMRS, okay. All right. Um. I'll give you the lowdown on Glenrock's and the commission's proposal. Um. Cause you guys didn't get this, the junior continuation meeting. Um, Glenrock, uh, could become a contract customer, this was voted on by commission. Glenrock could become a contract customer beginning, uh, January first, twenty-twenty-four, three hundred thousand a year. Term of the agreement would be for seven years. Cost of service would increase at a twenty percent discount to the percentage of the overall budget, subject to a maximum increase of five percent. I didn't understand that. So, for example.
Twenty percent discount, I didn't check the last one.
For example, if the annual budget increase is three point five percent, Glenrock's increase would be two point eight, twenty, twenty percent less. And if the annual budget increased by seven point five, theirs would be five percent, not six percent. Hourly cost of service, ten percent above the hourly cost for commission members. Originally, that was twelve and a half at the completion. This was what we said, the commission said. At the completion of the initial seven-year term, Glenrock would not have any obligation to long-term costs. They countered with, at the commencement of the initial seven-year term. In other words, once this starts, Glenrock would not have any obligations to long-term costs.
I, I came up with a question after we left that meeting. Um, what happens if there is a long-term obligation that was created due to an incident in Glenrock? And God forbid, let's say a police officer hit somebody or, you know, accidentally ran over somebody and the lawsuit ensues and it's going on.
I agree. I had that same question. I think that needs to be brought up. Erica, do you know anything? Cause you're kinda in the. No?
Well, if you're contracted, you don't have to carry, I mean, that's what they're saying, is, is they don't want any obligation if they're a contract purchaser. So it's no different than if we hired someone to do work and they ran over somebody, right?
Yeah, that would be on.
The owner, it wouldn't be on, it wouldn't be on the borough. So I think that's probably the position they're taking on that. They wanna move that up sooner than labor, so they don't have to.
Yeah, we wanted to keep them on until the end of the seven years and they.
We're gonna let the attorneys discuss it.
Yeah, that, that's all going back to the attorney. Um, and they can figure out and bring us a, another new proposal, but we're kinda antsy to get faultless taken care of because we've got plegiencies coming up. Um, Glenrock wouldn't have a seat on the commission, as we discussed, minimum two years' notice, um, no later than the end of the fifth year if they decide they do not want to renew or extend the contract. Um, the thing that I, I don't like is, we're not publishing what that hourly rate is going to be that Glenrock is paying.
Well, that, that, that actually, I wanna go on record, at least for myself as a council member, if no one else. We need to know what that rate is.
I, I agree.
If it comes back to count this council for approval, we have no idea what the rate is.
It has been, things have been discussed within executive session. Of course, I can't discuss that. We did discuss it, some of those things during our executive session at the last meeting, but I, I don't know how we can go forward without knowing what the hourly rate is gonna be.
I think that needs to be clear to the.
I believe that Gail discussed that in the meeting, in that.
Gail discussed it, but that doesn't mean we, we didn't accept it. It was all kept confidential. Am I correct?
You are the point of contact for the department. Maybe ask Gail that, she'll explain it to you and you can bring it back to council.
Well, I'd like to, but the chairman of, of the commission said we're not allowed to discuss it.
The offer is in public now.
Not the hourly rate isn't.
Then take it into executive session. I mean, it'd be one of the questions, I mean, you asked Gail the question, and if he can't, he's talked out here, take it into executive session, but at least you would satisfy the question.
Okay, let me ask the solicitor a question. We go into executive session and we discuss, this is what the hourly rate has been proposed. Well, we can't vote in executive session.
You can't vote in executive session, but you're not voting on anything this evening in open session.
We're not voting, no, but my question is, how can we vote to approve an hourly No, but my question is, how can we vote to approve an hourly rate when we're not allowed to discuss it?
Well, you're not.
Is your rate coming through? What?
Hourly rates aren't approved.
You said they already are.
Aren't. I mean, we're not, they give you the budget, they divide it up, how we need it according to the average, and that's what it is.
I know, but some of.
It is what it is.
Some of us are not necessarily agreeing with how it's being, how the hourly rate's being.
Well, I would believe that Gail would be the top person to do that. She's the department, she's the accountant, and when you have 15 other people that are trying to run numbers and think that they have the right number, you know, everybody's putting different stuff into the recipe, you're not gonna come out with the same one. So again, I would refer back to Gail.
And I'd like to see how they, how they calculate the hourly rate, not just the number from Gail, but how they come up with it.
Well, and that's something that's, they consider to be confidential, which I don't know at this point is fair.
It's not talked about in open meeting, in the commission meeting. Gail said how. I mean, I, I would ask for a detailed explanation from Gail.
Was it in the minutes?
No.
I don't know that it was put in the minutes, but Gail sits right over there, these questions are asked to her, so.
We're not allowed to talk about it outside of the executive session.
But if they were, I, I agree, if they're discussed in open session, they're not subject to the Gail executive session. Did you vote, did you talk about them back there or out here?
Back there.
So you didn't ask questions to Gail out here?
Yes. Just ask the question, Gail.
We were in a meeting where, where that happened. She was here to explain that.
Yes.
If you talked about it out here, I'm not sure why you can't talk about it now. If you talked about it back there in executive session, then I, yes, I understand why you couldn't.
I mean, I remember, Gail says it includes all costs, but I don't know what that.
See, that's.
Who says one that includes all the costs too? It's a lot different than when, uh, we think that.
Right.
Because you're putting different ingredients in the recipe.
Well, I'm hesitant to say a whole lot. You've got that many police hours, it's just bad. Like one and the other, you've got the cost per hour.
If it was only that simple, but you're not using all the ingredients. So the accountant versus a public citizen, I would believe, for the department, the accountant would know what goes into the numbers.
Well, I'd see the accountant's recipe then.
See, and that's what I think.
There you go.
You're, you're, wait a minute. You're saying you want to see the recipe for certain things that we do here.
Gail has already talked about this in the commission meetings, and I believe I've been satisfied. But if you want more, ask her to put it on paper to read it here.
You and I have it on paper, but we're not allowed to give it to anybody, is what I'm saying. According to Mike Sharkey, it is all confidential at this point. So we can't share with the rest of council how they came up with these numbers.
You can share how you arrived at the number. If the paper's still marked confidential, a working document, then no, don't share the actual dollar amount. But what's in that recipe, that's not being an, an address that you can't talk about.
That whole packet was more confidential and we were absolutely told we could not share it, other than in executive session.
If him asked, then we move on.
Okay, well, this started out me trying to ask Kim a question.
Okay, all right, let's do this. I, we, I mean, I agree that we need to know what's in the number, we need to know what the number is. That number can't be confidential once it's determined. I can understand while it's working, a working number, that they don't want, want it out. But it, once it's not a working number and it's an actual number, then I think I want to know how they came up with it and what the number is.
I agree.
And I believe absolutely you'll have that once Glen Rock agrees to whatever the percentage will be and whatever increase, you know, and, and the percentage that they're going to take.
Okay, that's fine.
So at that time, but you can know what goes in the recipe before then.
Why don't we just ask the mayor after that?
Yeah, why'd you find out?
I can't, she can't give me that information without the, without the commission's approval.
It's the Colonel's secret recipe, they didn't share it.
Am I right, am I right, Erica, or am I wrong? You're kind of shaking your head.
Wrong.
That packet that we have.
Quit talking about that packet, Kim. Just talk about what goes into figuring the borough's hourly rate. What's in the recipe? Is, is it admin, is it not, is it control? What is it? Just get that list, ask for that list. That's not confidential.
Okay.
Can we move on?
Yes.
I, I have, I have one thing to do, and either for the, the mayor or Erica, you can correct me. Dave and I were sitting at the commission meeting, but I understand that the commission is more or less saying that Glen Rock's got a contract for seven years. If you go out seven years and they can't afford to pay, there, there was, I get the feeling that, you know, listening to Brian Swizer, that, all right, so we're not gonna reduce the level of service. We're gonna keep the level of service if they can't afford to pay it. The other commission members will make up the difference so that Glen Rock can afford a minimum level of service without reducing.
No, that's, that's not true.
No.
As their, as their, as the costs go up, their hours are gonna go down.
And we will.
We will afford those hours, but they will not get additional service.
All right. I just found the whole thing very confusing as to when each council is gonna know what the hourly rate is. If we don't know that, I don't know how we can approve it.
Do you have anything else?
No, I don't. All right. Thanks. Engineering, engineering report. Questions on warehouse or warehouse, sorry? I don't think so. Dave. Sarah. No questions on warehouse, Erica?
Public Parks Water?
I would just like to say thank you for, I know it took a little bit, but, um, to punch out the mop sink installed in the communities. Well, thank you guys for dealing that part. Um, that'll help, I'll clean up the communities here and hopefully, hopefully keeping that floor clean, that area.
Where is it installed at?
It was inside the, the.
It was called the Royball Room, the home office, the community center, the auditorium.
Where the firehouse has their, in that, in that room of.
Yes.
That's now the community center closet, basically.
Yes.
Yeah? And the other closet that is, was on the other side, is that now our closet? Or is T O. still using that? Okay, so we have both of that. Okay. I have to say, I've asked two times, I've gone in to check the, the floors, you can eat off the floors. They were.
That's good.
I don't know who did it, but they were, they were, they were great. I know they are putting in some things about confetti and glitter.
Yeah, that's a real, that's hard. A few, a few years of glitter and confetti, you ain't picking it up unless you like really mock it.
Yeah, and you ain't getting your, your deposit back.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, wastewater treatment plant, I want to point out that there was a small violation. It was an instantaneous maximal allowable limit. Uh, there's no fine, no problems with it, but, um, and it was, uh, basically self-reported.
Should also cover the, uh.
Sorry?
Should also cover the remedy that they came up with.
Oh, yes, they've, uh, installed a, um, a flow meter on the chloride pump so that if it fails, they, they get an immediate signal. So what happened was the, uh, the chlor- chlorine drip failed and caused the fecal matter to go up slightly. So, and now, uh, they will be notified as soon as that happens. So everything's taken care of, remedy, then it won't happen again.
What was the lead-up to the failure? Like normally things just don't fail.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
It just failed.
There was no.
Was that the one, the pump burned up?
Yeah, it was just, yeah, there wasn't any way to, it just shut down. Yeah, you could do one of two things. You could put a backup pump that's always running, or you could put in a, uh, a flow, uh, something to detect if the flow stops. And they chose to do is when the flow stops, so.
There we, yeah, here, oil seal on the motor failed and it.
So there was no oil leak prior?
No, it was just a catastrophic failure.
Yeah, we have similar things that we just, this is run the failure parts of it.
Yeah, and just, yeah.
What, what is, so the regular scheduled sample, what is this schedule like?
I forget, remember, I mean, it's a daily, they have daily samples, they have weekly samples, they have.
I understand that it's all spelled out in the permit.
Yeah.
Right, at the, the discharge permit, the, the.
Yeah, they tell us when we have to, how often we have to.
You know, how many hours of, it says shut off sometime during overnight. Do you know how many hours it was shut off?
No. No, it fell as soon as they found it, they fixed it.
Do you know how old the pump was?
No.
Do you know how many pumps were upgraded?
Wait, would you want to take any of those other options for example? Okay, right. Excuse me, sorry, these would be for John. I got you.
Well, it was overnight, they found it the next day.
Yeah, it wasn't, I, it's not a cata, it's not a catastrophic failure in the sewage treatment plant. It's not something that we're, we were gonna get shut down for. I mean, you know, you have to, you have to factor in the consequences and the costs of everything. So, I mean, I, they didn't do anything wrong and it wasn't an actionable offense. So there was no fine or anything. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah, they have to. Now, we, did we order all new pumps for every one of those so that doesn't happen again? It says, it says here, it's reported to the D E P, we have ordered upgraded pumps with options that include motor run status leak detection and a flow meter, which is what you were talking about. There is more than one of these and we're replacing all of them, is that correct?
That's John, that's not me.
Okay, I, I didn't know if you.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I don't know.
Okay, that's all right. Forty days to fix. All right. Forty days to fix?
So, where?
Happened June 8th.
It was fixed the next day.
What happens June 8th and it says 7/18? It happened June 8th and it says it'll be done July 18th?
No, the, the pump was brought back, uh, the pump was repaired and brought back online, but all of the, everything is going to be done as far as the upgrade will be done by 7/18. Everything's not functioning correctly at this point.
With the millions of gallons that come in from New Freedom and Shrewsbury, when you look at the total volume at the top, there's like five million gallons missing. Where are those five million gallons? That aren't accounted for in what came in from New Freedom and Shrewsbury?
You added the volume of, of wastewater for Shrewsbury, New Freedom and.
Total volume of wastewater for New Freedom, total volume of wastewater for Shrewsbury. Those are the only two. I guess another question on that, Railroad, Shrewsbury Township and Hopewell Township use that plant also?
That goes through Shrewsbury.
Goes through Shrewsbury.
Shrewsbury goes.
It's included in their numbers though, it's not.
Uh huh. Why don't we have, it would seem to be an easy number to get. Why don't we have a breakdown of what those three are using coming through Shrewsbury Borough?
We don't care.
That would be up to Shrewsbury Borough.
It's up to Shrewsbury Borough.
Flow meters to separate each one, to be able to get that.
I don't even know.
Well, they do because they go.
Now, do you know, do you know, does any flow meters telling us what comes from Shrewsbury to us and us going through the line? But look, he's lose flow meters, the townships you're talking about, the way the collection system lays out, it goes into Shrewsbury and then it combines with Shrewsbury, so it will be picked up by Shrewsbury Borough.
Exactly, that they could report to have on this report.
But that's not a required thing to report and it's not something that we try.
It's not something that anybody would want to know?
Collective Township might want to know.
How much the township uses it or.
A Shrewsbury chartering for, right?
Percentage of all these expansions and upgrades? Nobody wants to know all these businesses that are going in? Nobody wants to know what the township usage is?
Again, if it comes through Shrewsbury.
Sure, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not debating that.
I'll pack Shrewsbury Borough and see if they have flow meters on those.
Well, actually they do because they have to go back to them for payment.
Okay.
So I just think it would be something to, you know, have on here, the usage of those three.
Well, that would have to go into any new agreement between us and Shrewsbury.
What?
The agreement is, we don't care.
Okay, you don't even care.
Because they pay Shrewsbury.
They pay Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury pays us, yeah.
I'm more interested in the 5,000 gallons that's missing.
Why not?
I know, I know it's missing, you, but I'm sorry, it's a little bit of a, you're correct. Yeah, there is only, you have to, you have to discrepancy.
30, 4,007, 36.
Yeah.
So, Dennis, where would five million gallons be?
You know, historically, my experience has been, and I don't know if this explains the whole thing or not, but you get two flow meters, they'll never agree. If you got a plant flow meter and you're adding, there results in two flow meters in the system, they'll never agree with the treatment plan.
That's 16% of the volume though.
I know, but it's, it's, it's a significant number.
It is.
I just did it too, and it's in terms of gallons per day, it's a significant number. But they'll never, they're never, they'll never agree. Now, five million gallons, yeah, that's, that's a significant amount now.
You just mention it to John and see what, you know, why don't we just do that?
I wonder, could, is it possible that there's some kind of like, they record on a certain day, we record on a certain day?
And, and, yeah, I mean, that could explain some of it too. But that's how you get to know the lot.
No, it's a total, it's a total volume and it should, it shouldn't be, shouldn't be different days, but. Yeah, we'll ask John.
Yeah, why they, it is.
It's an interesting, it's an interesting question.
Maybe we do the 31st and they do the 12th. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll find out.
Too interesting. The Shrewsbury, 17 million. Where is the meter at that counts that? Is it in like plant, is it in somewhere?
I think it's, you know, if you go through Railroad where the sharp curve is, there's a line that comes in from Shrewsbury. And I think right there is where the flow meter is, where it pumps into our line and then they all head to the treatment plant. So there.
With the playground you're talking about?
Yeah, somewhere around, it's along the street, it's along, it's just off the road.
Yeah.
But that is, let's go ahead and move on to the, uh, zoning enforcement.
My rock. Do you have a business card? Do you have a business card with you?
Yes. Oh, I have one question on the back of it, sorry.
On which?
At the, so they're planning around the last thing. They need to take away the stone or replace with compacting stone to allow for greater truck turning radius. Why is this needed now?
Because they get deliveries, I remember this, they get deliveries and the, they can't get the big trucks in.
So it's not our trucks?
To turn around. Well, when we get delivery trucks or if.
Deliveries.
Well, no, they come in and they pick up the sludge. Well, no, they come in and they pick up the sludge, okay, on big trucks.
About delivery, well, they're coming into our...
They're coming into our plant to take away our sludge.
I think you're, they're all part of the point, because this is still a vehicle store.
Is it?
This is a vehicle store.
I know, we've, we've talked about this for like three years.
That is, that is binary for larger vehicles.
It's just a lot for greater, uh, turn radius. Yeah, because they're afraid they're gonna back, back into one of the buildings.
Just to get their, just to get like their vector truck out of the building.
Yeah.
So, just sort of all coming out there. It's such a steep bank there to maintain for grass, you have to re-lack it. They decided to put a stone there, so at least they have a little bit more turning radius. So, now it's less maintenance for them to do, and...
Just, it just makes it safer.
So, if they're putting out a building, you know, we've talked about that.
Question on permits. Permits, permits. This might go along with permits, if I can go back. We are putting out a newsletter in August, am I correct?
Sure thing.
Okay, do you know where we are on that?
No, I don't.
Do we still have time to put some, some things in?
Yeah, it should be fine.
I would like to see one thing, and I have a couple others I'll have handy back. We do have a rental ordinance. I don't know if anybody knows it. We have a rental ordinance that says anybody that rents out must register that person with the borough. I don't think we've done it for a long time. I would like to see something placed in the newsletter, because everybody gets that newsletter.
You talk about real estate there?
Yeah, yeah, we have places that are renting out houses. We've got rental properties down by, by the train, the old train station. I think there's like six or eight apartments there. We have no idea who, who's there. Or, you know, there's Knox boxes that should, that would be required in some of those if there's three or more families. I just, we've got the ordinance, I think we need to start up with...
How do we get their income tax from people who are...
From them? Because we don't have an idea, they're not registering. They have, I think they have, there's X amount of days, I don't have the ordinance. You have X amount of days when somebody moves out to report that that person's moved out, then X amount of days when a new renter moves in to notify the borough that a new renter has moved in. And we just, we haven't done that for a long time, if I can, if I can remember. And I think that's something that we need to be aware of, because we're gonna, eventually, I think it's to the point where we need to do... Because right now, you're not doing any rental inspections, are you, Wade?
No.
Major here. That's something I think every other municipality does except for us. We've got some doozies, let me tell you. And that could go along with one of our problems with...
That's what I was just gonna say, if we had rental inspections, like yearly or whatever, at least it would give you the opportunity to enter.
Yep. They're going through a couple of them, and fines are... How mu, how much is the one flying Eric though? Is there a, a couple thousand dollars?
Len Rock?
Len Rock, for a rental that they want?
And a split.
Yeah. So, I, I think it's good.
Spring, yeah, Spring Garden Hatchet, they have, when the person goes in to inspect for rentals, if the property is, I don't know what about the right word, is decrepit, you know, filthy, you know, they will cite the property.
Right, and that's what Len Rock...
As part of, yeah.
Yeah, and then so does Shrewsbury. I just think we, we need to take a little bit more action on that. Because we're getting more and more, you know, kind of vice your home thing.
Yeah. We could add that to the newsletter, and maybe we should put that on, you know, for next month, to talk about.
Yeah, oh, okay.
While we put it on you, then.
Okay.
Code enforcement report. Number one's going on nearly a year. We've been through two burn bans, and I don't see how weather has impeded this for one year. Number one? Since August twenty-two.
Yeah, that's...
I know Andy spoke with him, I do know what the conversation was.
He's supposedly putting in something where he can take the vehicle back from property?
He's moving it to another property.
Property into another property.
But it's not our responsibility or problem that he says weather for one full year has impeded him. There are storage availability options, and...
You're right.
Should look into that.
Yep, he could take it someplace down by Freedom Fitness. I think they've rented out spaces down there.
Property in line.
I agree. There is one on here that says...
If we, um... I have a, I have a quick question. If we went to him and we, we said, you know, you can't store your vehicle on the property, what's to stop him from just parking it back on the street again?
I know, that was why we cut it off.
I think that's why we're kind of waiting and hoping. Because there's really no recourse that we have if he decides, okay, I'll just park it back on the street again. He was actually being somewhat cooperative by getting it off the street, so that there's no problems with the neighbors. Just wanna point that out.
But there's another situation where we could get ourselves in a jam. If we don't enforce him, how would we enforce somebody else?
Well, oh, I see, you mean enforcing it to be on the property, yeah, I agree.
You already said that you're not enforcing others because of what you're allowing there. Then you're allowing him to park on grass, that, you know, why do we have ordinances?
I agree, I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying that the truck moves back onto the road if you wish to issue it, I guess. Follow up?
Well, was, was there a part of the ordinance that said he couldn't park the truck on the, on the road? There wasn't?
Addressed.
He just did that as a favor to us to give, so we didn't end up widening the road at that one point?
Yeah, okay, that's the way I understand it, then.
Second one, I think it's been taken care of. If you're waiting on service and notification from the magistrate, you're not gonna get it because the person's in Florida, it moved to Florida.
So, you're saying this can be closed?
I, I would, I'm driven by, and it's cleaned up ninety percent.
Okay.
And I know letters, yeah, another letter's been sent out on number, three, and three, and...
Four, a couple letters, right?
Yeah. I was told that the West area was gonna be gone by the eighteenth.
We're not being provided with the updated photos of the resolution, of the violation being closed? Or we had been? Also requested?
For any one in specific?
Let's see, photo seven's been closed, photo eight's been closed. There's the vehicle in the tree. That's what it says.
Just, yeah, it says it's been...
Documentation, it's all up there.
Yeah, it says closed?
Anything else? So, we can get a photo, I guess, for numbers seven and eight, which is the same property? Good. Subdivision of land development?
On the outdoor pavilion, the last one, I sent in a question after I was asked over the weekend. Andrew says all of the documentation is now here to approve it. Wade, when will the, who will be sent?
The permit is in the process of being, the paperwork's being filled out now. I finally got the last piece of revised application. The application is finally now completed, so if we finish with the recording, it should possibly be done to begin with. There's still have to get the stormwater O and M agreement as well, we need to be recorded and final. But the permit can be issued as we work with that part of the process.
So, you hope by end of this week? And then stormwater, it's just, it's just letter O and M?
Operation...
And that has to be filed?
Has to be recorded.
Recorded, accounted, okay.
They record that, or do we record that?
We can record that if we can just do that with a signature, and then all the, the... Attached with all the drawings that are attached with that to record that.
Is there a fee for the borough to get that recorded?
I do not, I don't, I guess, I use it like a...
There usually is, but it's like forty-five dollars or something. It's not a big fee.
But that reporting, you can give the approval and permit, and the recording can happen simultaneously, but you can still give that this week?
The third one, is that called something else previous? Did we refer to that as something else?
R and M.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah, why is it, why did it change from R and M to New Haven?
Changed, didn't it?
I asked that last month, and they said that that is the name of that development that's going in behind the lumberyard.
Yep.
Thirty-seven lots.
But it meets the rig, the zoning, they're half acre lots now.
Wade, how many phases of that are there going in from R and M?
We don't have a formal submittal yet, but sort of that would be phased with the...
Do they get a...
They already, Ken already said they do.
They said it was, if they fit the standard view, I was not here for that, so I don't know, I keep out of that, but it was given back to the, to the engineers of the name comments, and it has not even been rescheduled for submittal, because all the comments have yet to be addressed.
Wade, is that, we've got several pages of comments.
It's all over the engineering one that we just looked at, it's...
And that, that, there were substantial amount of comments from both engineers.
Yeah. Recreation?
She gave me the agenda.
Yeah, this is what she, I, I can try to, I'll do my best here.
Oh, there was nothing there.
Yeah. Um, it was not labeled there too, so I thank Eric for being there. She just noted that the, uh, next coming concerts, and, I'm sorry, the, the attendance and pickleball programs will be advertised in the local celebrity magazine. And Larry and Brian provided a page on Boy Scouts in America camp. Everything is progressing pretty nicely. Wanted to get with Andrew, I was wondering if he registers, he had a whole website. Since this is the, I think the first time he's gonna be using online registration for, for exclusively. But I have to go to the New Freedom website to fill out the appropriate information.
Do you, do you know the requirement to have one parent per child, or one chaperone per child? Is that something that Boy Scouts wanted, or rec wanted?
First time he was there, Boy Scout said it.
I was just curious.
This is information about adult tennis, and the, the first session will end on seven eight, twelve participants. And the next six weeks, the session will begin on seven fifteen. Pickleball continues to be a six-hour program, we had twenty-seven participants in June. We talked about the parade, obviously it was a hot day, so we didn't really know about that, but I was very happy with the number of turnout that we had. From what I understand, it was one medical emergency that happened right outside of Stephen DeHistry's old office, right in the bike trail. So, it was nice, I think ambulances, which were already in the parade, were literally right there. So, I don't know if it was all, but I, I believe everybody was okay after that. Concerts in the park, again, two concerts, August twenty-sixth, and then a karaoke event will be on September twenty-third. They do have food trucks lined up for both of them. Both of them are in the process of getting their insurance certificates, and all the information submitted to the borough. And then, Marion, I have a note here that, which is, will be one of the members on the some feasibility panel, committee for March Kudfeller Park. That date, I don't believe it's finalized, I mean, he just asked for...
I can see that.
It is scheduled for either Wednesday, Thursday, next week, during the day. And that was all I had for right.
Can I ask a question about the Boy Scouts, the camp out there? Does anybody have, I can't remember where I saw it. Does anybody have a list of the events for that?
They have a tentative list, they have everything in, that's set in.
The only thing that concerned me about what I saw was a bottle rocket tennis?
Yeah, I didn't see that.
No, it's, it's like a two-liter bottle of water, that you pressurize, and it goes up a couple feet.
When I think of bottle rockets...
That's the same thing.
I'm going back a few years, where, not that I would ever set them off and down.
That's the same thing I thought.
Okay.
What was discussed is just a two-liter bottle, you pressurize it with a white pump, pull a pin or a valve, and it goes fifteen, twenty feet.
Yeah, I've seen, my grandkids always...
No, the only thing that would be related, they were talking about doing some fire pits, and it'll be in the stone area, close to the bandstand.
I would like to thank whoever, did you guys put the new rails in down at the bandstand?
Yes.
You did a wonderful job, thank you for doing that. That was, boy, you were quick on that one, they look great. They look great. Somebody apparently had knocked the old ones out, and these guys zoomed down before the carnival, because I was afraid somebody would, you know, with no rail... Because I was afraid somebody would, you know, with no rails would fall off the side. Nice job, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ryan. If there's anything for business development, did you want to talk about EMS for a second?
Yeah, we're getting ready for our budget season. I'm going to get together and get some figures from EMS. They're really in a pickle and we all know how volunteerism is. Well, guess what, now it's not just volunteerism, it's paidism. We can't keep paid people. They tend to come in, they serve their time, get some experience and go to UPMC or Wellspan. And we're really having a situation, we've got two ambulances, one is permanently out of service now. Until they can put a whole new cap on it, which will be maybe nine months to a year. The other ambulance that we have is tending to have some mechanical problems. So we're down to no ambulances and luckily, when they can, Glenrock loans us their ambulance to use. Which leaves them, I guess, with nothing. Or they're giving us back that Suburban or whatever that was. That we were using for a chase truck trial for three months. I think we need to sit back and consider where we're going to be on this. Because we've got Glenrock, who, I'm not going to say they're definitely going to, but they're either going to have to hire out to Wellspan or UPMC. Because John Trout has said that he's going to be, he's finished. Ed Bailey is saying that he's, this is his last year. And there, there are EMTs. There are EMTs. So if they're out, that means we're going to have to cover Glenrock, Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury Township, Hopewell. Sometimes Northern Baltimore County, sometimes Cadorus. And we're, I get a report every month, I was talking to Ryan about it. I'm going to see if maybe I can get that to Andrew. So that you can really see how many calls we are missing. We're either missing the calls, we can't get out, we're already on a call and we've got to wait for somebody else to come in. We are working with, again, trying to work with our state senator and Kate and Kristen. To try to do something with payments from insurance companies. Because as I've told you, I think we get somebody that's on Medicaid, we get eighty-six dollars. That's all they pay. And if it's an ALS, which means we've got a paramedic onboard and they have to, the hospital tells them to give them medication. We can't even file to get the medication.
I kind of know what we talked about earlier today, but let me just jump in. Mayor's taking an action to, to come, to talk with EMS and come up with a list of the expenses and revenues from EMS. So that we could take and see what the delta is on that. So that we could figure out what we have to do to support EMS and possibly even going to other municipalities and saying, this is the hole we have, we need this much money. And...
Don't get me wrong, they do contribute, but I think it needs to be a fair amount. We're housing them, you know, we supply the bunkers for them, you know, and they do pay for service. But we need to figure out, is it enough?
And revenues include ambulance memberships, you know, the money that we do get back from insurance companies. Contributions from other municipalities, but it's not enough. And we're not paying, I mean, our, our EMTs can literally walk across the street to Rogers and make more money than they're making being an EMT. So, I mean, we can't expect that we're going to keep top quality people if we are paying that kind of way. So if we want to build up our, and we as a borough, every municipality is required to provide fire, police, ambulance. So it's, it's not just something that we're doing because, you know, we just love everybody, but it's a requirement, we have to do that. So anyway, so hopefully the mayor can come up, you know, he'll get, talk with Holloway and see what we're looking at for the amount that they need. And talk to the other, maybe have a meeting with the other municipalities and see how we can come up with the delta to cover.
Because our EMS conglomerate did not apparently work out, we haven't had a meeting in six months.
No, I just, I just don't think DCD is, you know, that's another, we're looking for grant money for that too, to try to help us out. And it just isn't going through and in the meantime, we're, you know, needing another ambulance and more people, so.
Let me tell you what some of them are doing. Stewartstown is using Life Team Medic for their ALS. Redline's using Life Team Medic for their ALS. They're charging like sixty-eight dollars an hour to have a paramedic on duty.
That's where we're going to end up being.
How, if they're charging more to get those people, how are they getting that money back? Because if we're not getting that money back, I imagine they're not getting that money back either.
Well, the good thing, the only good thing about it is, we don't have to worry about that. Because they, UPMC and, and Wellspan, they go after the money. It's not allowed out of our hands, we don't have to worry about trying to get the money. So it is, it's not a bad idea for us to look overall at possibly supplementing with paid paramedics from UPMC or Wellspan or whatever. I mean, if we can't staff it fully here, there might be some...
That's where we'll end up and then that means we're absolutely going to have to do...
So they're essentially subsidizing through the hospital that they're associating with.
Broderson used to charge, do you want to add something?
And usually it's just a paramedic so they can make out ALS calls. Which means they can push meds, you know, they can do a lot of other things. We're trying to work together with our EMS group so that they at least can do, get blood pressure and do minimal, you know, take their temperature, check their heart, you know, do their blood pressure. We can at least get paid a minimal amount rather than them saying, oh, yeah, we called you, you're here, we're out of service for an hour and somebody else needs us, at least we're getting paid because we did something. You know, eighty-six dollars doesn't do it for three people and an ambulance fuel to run to the hospital rooms.
Yeah, we all, we all understand the problem, we just have to figure out what the solution is. And it may be some shared, you know, for instance, Stewartstown has paid paramedics. They have a service at, during the, what, from six o'clock in the evening till sometime, you know, cover that period of time. And then they have their own people covering the other time. So, you know, there may be some split out that we can do. We just need to get smart and try to figure out what the best solution is. But this is the first step.
For our residents, for our citizens, if we're not leaving them, that's who we have to look at.
So I just had a physical. Anyway, so infrastructure, I don't think there's anything personnel, we already talked about it prior from last month. Public safety, is there anything additional? Susquehannet annual committee, anything new? Burnell did say that he's got the teams together for, I think he wants to do August, which is really hot. But for a old timers baseball, or a baseball game at Veterans Park. So that looks like it's shaping up, that was the last thing.
Everyone certified in CPR and AED, raise your hand. I just passed mine.
We have no correspondence, no executive session, any other public comment?
Yeah, Danny. The question, so about a month or so ago, we had a primary election. So I'm an independent, so I don't get to vote in those. But as my understanding, we probably got more, made way more candidates running than we got open positions for the first time, I think, in a long time. And what I was wondering if the council would endorse, either put on your agenda for discussion next month. But having the borough sponsor a get to know the candidates kind of session, maybe on a Saturday afternoon in March Goodfellow Park. For maybe an hour and a half, a set of, you know, questions, maybe a two minutes introduction from each candidate. Couple, three minutes on select topics, you can just look at what's going on in the last couple of meetings. We've come up with a lot of hot button topics that people have interest in. And then maybe just a half hour where the candidates can mingle with the crowd and answer specific questions. But I, I think it's probably do that, particularly given the number of candidates I think we've got. I think the first time that I remember, I think we've got more than double the amount of candidates that we may have positions open. So I mean, it's a good thing, but I'd like to get to know the candidates before I show up and vote in November.
Well, I think they're having their, aren't you guys having your own?
We did.
The others?
We, we had a...
Saw another one?
We had a meeting agreed for us, Danny. Right before the election at seven, we had traded. But I don't know if the borough needs to pay for anything, I mean, I'm worried for anything.
That's highly inappropriate. As US citizens, you should reach out to the people that are running. And when you have city council members to stump for themselves through a borough organized event, it's highly inappropriate.
Well, I don't think it'd be inappropriate.
Absolutely.
Well, we're going to be hoping that, I don't think the borough needs to pay for it.
He's just, they don't pay for it.
I mean, I don't know.
It's, it's okay, he came with the suggestion and I, you know, it's, it's okay to say you don't think it's appropriate. But I don't think you need to...
Well, you said it wasn't good, but I'm saying it's highly, it was highly inappropriate.
I said, I didn't feel like that was inappropriate, I just don't think the borough needs to pay for it.
Well, I wouldn't think it would cost the borough anything to have people show up at March Goodfellow Park.
I think the individual candidates, if you want to have something, that's great and I'm sure they'll put out information to do that. But to have this council organize something or the office.
I don't know what it takes to organize it, I think it'd be...
Put it together, sponsor it, whether it's...
Just, we need to moderate for an hour and a half or something.
Whether it's zero money or not, I just don't think this is the venue to organize that.
Where do they hold that?
I entertain a motion to adjourn, Wade.
No.
Second?
No.
Okay.
Hold on.
I was telling you, I'm seeing dogs were walking in real true, I went by the, the park down here and all the, all the stuff was gone mostly and Jake had, had him out there picking up trash, they wanted to cut grass. But there's a fair amount of grass that's been disturbed and we're going to have an event down there.
It's a mess.
Yeah, and we're going to have an event down there in a, in a couple of weeks. And, you know, we're going to be using the same area, but I don't want to see the borough get dinged from stuff that, from Alliance Club event where the grass is just, there'll need to be replanted, et cetera. And we can't do it this time of year anymore.
Donnie, what's always been the, hasn't the Lions Club been held responsible for taking care of that?
Some years, yes, some years, no.
Is that something you would like me, as the council would like me to bring up?
That's, I thought that the car would have shirts.
They do, but I watched them yesterday and they're down there and they're spinning their tires and they're all the way up to their axles. They had to give another...
I mean, we had a lot of rain, you know, but it still has to be fixed.
Well, and I know it's somebody's responsibility, whether it's the carnival people or the Lions. Something's telling me the Lions always took care of it, they hired somebody.
Why don't we have, add into the contract, who's responsible?
Yeah, what, yeah, can you check to see?
Yeah, I'll call them.
Well, yeah, but even though the Lions Club rents it, I mean, they should be able to go back to the carnival and say, you duck holes here. Yeah, I would, I would mention.
I guess all I'm saying is it's about to get evaluated. Now, because when the borough has, since it's been down there, there's probably going to be some disturbance too. And, and we should be responsible for that.
Yeah, you're right.
But I don't want to see us get dinged from something else, the Lions, for a Lions Club event.
Yeah.
Let me make a call tomorrow and I'll send you all an email on what the response is. Because I think the Lions have taken care of that in the past.
They fixed it last year, my husband and Dan Feeler fixed the rest last year.
Yeah, yeah, because there was straw down there and they planted seed.
The straw would be messy for the rails.
Well, part of it though is, man, there's really ruts, I mean, like I said, those tires got all the way up and you hank their axles.
You can't, you can't do any restoration now. I mean, you have, it's a... Too hot, there's, trying to get grass to release now, but it has to get done.
No, but at least fill it in with dirt, most of it's ruts.
You have to put iron on it and stuff.
Right, right.
Can't lose an ankle, at least get back on.
They still have to put some kind of straw or something down because if we're going to smoke on the rail, we're going to be running like meat and ice and stuff to these vendors. You know, you're going to be stirring up dust, now you've got dust and you're trying to cook, you know what I mean? So, I mean, you got to get a straw down or something, even if you don't put the grass seed down. I mean, I still put the grass seed down, but put, put the straw down so you at least have something to keep down.
Is there a particular part of the park that they're planning on using the majority on?
I think they're probably using the whole part.
The whole part?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, the whole part.
Are they using the cookchaps?
Yes.
Anything?
Just for like ticket sales and stuff like that. And they are using them one to cook breakfast and stuff for the grills.
Are the Lions doing that?
They're doing it Sunday morning, I think.
The Lions are, I thought they were.
Either Saturday or Sunday morning.
Yeah, they're doing it at six o'clock or six thirty, yeah.
Speaking of the cookchaps, I think they're going to be painted, it's an Eagle Scout project this week.
It was supposed to be painted three weeks ago, I don't know.
Yeah, he's planning on doing it this weekend.
Are they?
Yeah, he's planning on doing it this weekend.
Yeah, because they kind of put primer in, on, which was gray and then never finished it.
Yeah, I don't know what happened with the timing.
It's, you know, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, it looked like that. I don't think anybody else did either, to be honest with you, but they volunteered to do that.
I'm okay, it's exceptional this year.
They will work.
Well, you got approval lines, not the...
Oh, yeah.
The Lions, yeah.
I have... I would like to adjourn, second, I'll favor.
They, that's been, it's been a big fight over the years. They weren't supposed to, the one year, and the guy, the guy said that we were putting the contract, so...